Ready for us to start?
Chris Morelli is just checking in. Gina says yes.
Okay, okay, so. Good evening, everyone. The May 18th meeting of the Belfont Borough Council is called to order. Prior to the meeting this evening, we held an executive session to deal with human resources and real estate. I'd like to have a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for all of the victims in our EMS and emergency services providers for this COVID-19 issue. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God. Vocal, please.
Alrighty. Ms. Humbosky. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Mr. John. Mr. Prendergast.
I'm here.
Ms. Thompson is excused. Ms. Tosti Vacy.
I'm here.
Ms. Walker is excused. Mr. Brackbill.
Here.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Mr. Eaton.
Here.
And Mayor Wilson.
President.
I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So move Brackbill.
I'll second it.
Johnson, who I heard. Any changes?
I, I have a change. I think. Page four. It says Belfont School District cleared both groups to use the field. It says Johnson made move to approve the event. I don't know that I did that. Could, could we check that sometime? Because I, I wasn't for this, but maybe I did it to get it so we could discuss it.
I think that's what you did.
Okay.
I agree. I think that's what happened.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much. Then no changes.
Seeing no changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that a motion.
Prendergast?
I'll second it.
Clayton. Any, there's nothing to be pulled. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Communications, written communications.
First one is a letter from the Belfont Chamber of Commerce in regard to their annual croquet tournament. They would like permission to schedule that for July 12th in Tally Ram Park. The extended area, they're asking for waiver of all fees and they are also planning to have an after-party that involves some alcohol, but they would do what they've done in the past, have a perimeter fencing and certified people with watching over who gets the alcohol and all that like they normally do. But that's kind of the overview of their request.
Need a motion to conditionally prove the croquet tournament for all day on Sunday, July 12th, with the alcoholic beverage service plan outlined in the letter with the provision that the chamber limit the participation to 25 people for the coronavirus orders of Governor Wal. Also waive the registration fee and application fee, but not the damage fee, which is reimbursable because that's what we do with everybody else.
Should we?
I'll make that motion, Joanne.
I'll second that motion. Instead of up to 25 people, can you just say whatever the CDC guidelines are? Because if we move into green phase by then, you'll be able to have gatherings up to 100.
Do we know if the state guidelines and the CDC guidelines will be the same?
That's, that's the state guidelines that came from the PA Parks and Rec Society.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's reasonable, so.
Yeah, I think, I think too, just in case, you know, you never know what's going to happen out there. But, you know, we still should have that contingency of right of, uh, just right to cancel from the borough, just in case things flip the other way, you know.
I think that, I think that should be in the letter, just in case.
Right, right.
Borough reserves the right to cancel it if.
I think that should be boilerplate for the time.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay, do we want to make that, those two changes as to participation per the gov- governor's orders? And give in the 25 with the right to cancel by the borough if needed.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, that's Mike and.
Randy.
Mike and Randy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to amend? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now's the main motion. All in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
In favor? All opposed? Okay, so moved. Okay, so please send the letter out to that effect, Ralph.
Alrighty. The next letter is from the Belfont Arts and Crafts Fair organizers. They're just letting us notice that the event has been canceled. It's usually scheduled the first week in August and due to the COVID-19 precautions and not knowing where we'll be, they did go ahead and decide to cancel the event.
Okay.
The next item is from one of the Belfont Bed and Breakfast establishments. And they, the letter is asking if the borough would consider suspending a, a portion of the B and B ordinance, the bed and breakfast ordinance that says a, a tenant or a person staying cannot stay more than 14 consecutive days for a total of 45 days in a 12-month period. Simple suspension, it would give them some more options to have staying in their establishments, you know, during this time.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Um, well, I'll make the motion just so we can discuss it.
Okay.
I'll second Johnson.
Prendergast and Johnson. Discussion?
They're just asking for a temporary.
He, he, yes, they're asking, they, they threw out a date, I think, to next year. I, I think you could simply just say we're suspending it until further notice, you know, until we, we see what's happening in, with the the green, the yellow and whatnot, what's happening, but I, I think a simple suspension would, I think council could easily do that.
Ralph, I, I'm just curious, do we know, what, what's the basis for the, 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 the 14-day limit that is currently specified?
Well, they, I, you know, I don't, I don't have time to research the ordinance, but B and Bs were meant to be short-term stays. They were not meant to be long-term apartments, you know, we have apartments for that. Uh, and they, just in the eyes of, at the time when B and Bs were starting to be established, we created the ordinance and 14 days must have been kind of the motto at the time, but it was, it's always in our ideas, a weekend stay, maybe a week stay, but not, not long-term, not a month stay was our view.
I'm wondering if they're trying to extend it so that their clients from New York can come down and stay.
They, they gave us some six days.
One at a time. Tom, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I mean, I, I read the letter. And these folks just moved into the borough about a year ago and they've been really good stewards. Uh, some good ideas and I, I think with everyone sort of making allowance, suspending over backwards in some respects to help businesses during this time, this is not a terrible request from them. I think they, they know their business well enough that they may be able to, if they can get some longer-term people in there for a short period of time, that's, that could be helpful for them and other B and Bs in our communities. So I really think we should consider what Ralph said to do it on a temporary basis or until, until things change if they ever do.
So let, let me ask a question. The motion was to suspend until further notice. Would that notice technically be the lifting of our emergency declaration?
Doesn't have to be. It can be council brings this back up. You know, three months from now, four months from now, we say, you, you know, one of us remembers that we, we put this on and the economy's doing good. May we decide, do we want to keep it on a little bit longer? We just bring it back up under old business at some point. But it doesn't, it doesn't have to align identically with the declaration of emergency.
Hey Ralph, I was, uh, I was thinking, uh, maybe this motion should have something that carries with it a checking with Center Region Code. Something in my mind speaks to the fact that this 14-day thing versus a hotel type of operation has something to do with code, but I'm not 100% sure.
Well, it's, it is, it is a local ordinance on the books. And the apartment, the unit is inspected, has the same safety standards as a, an apartment would. Uh, so I, I think the restriction is on our end.
I agree, I agree with Ralph, that they go through the same rigorous inspection that apartments do. And I think it's a stroke of a pen or approval of the Borough Council to allow this to happen, at least temporarily. So I'm in favor of it.
I agree, but I think we should limit on the how long the suspension is and then revisit it if it needs to. Well, that's what we're doing.
Mike, in that case, Mike, if you want to put a time limit on it, you need to amend the motion.
I'd say we suspended for six months.
Maybe just say to the end of the year, if that's all right, and then, then we'll revisit it. You know, come December or thereabouts.
We say the, uh, can we say the first meeting in December?
Sure.
Because what, you know, what's going to happen is they can have somebody staying there and you'll, you know, think they got to get rid of somebody because they're going over their time limit, so we got to give some wiggle room.
Yeah, okay.
Alright.
I, I have a question.
Yes, Dan.
Um, does the 14-day limit have anything to do with the hotel tax? Are B and, are B and Bs subject to a hotel tax?
They are, they are subject to a bed, a bed tax. Uh, I don't, I don't want to get into that, you know, but there are to collect the bed, the head tax, we call it. And at the time, there wasn't a hotel tax, so I, I don't think they're related to 14-day and the taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Mike has made a motion to amend this to until the first meeting in December. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Clayton. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor of having this motion go through till the suspension till the first meeting in December?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've got back to the main motions. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, all in favor of suspending the B and B time limits through the first meeting of December? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Go ahead. Thank you.
The next piece of correspondence is from Carrie Benninghoff, Representative State, Carrie Benninghoff, State Representative, uh, in regard to the Union Cemetery. He, he basically was visiting the cemetery and voiced some concerns about short-term conditions and long-term revitalization of the Union Cemetery, which, uh, you know, council has been wrestling with that. It's not, I, I want to say quickly, it's not a borough property. However, we, the borough has been assisting the Cemetery Association with maintenance for many years. Uh, but the letter just goes on expressing some concern. And as we know, the association members are few and getting older, you know, and so on, so there's definitely a situation that's brewing that needs some kind of local attention. But, uh, it's there for your review and we, we probably, I would say suggest recommending it or sending it to one of the committees.
I would, I'd like to refer this to the Building and Property Committee for review and recommendations and and to possibly invite Carrie Benninghoff to that meeting so that he can put, have his input.
Maybe he can, uh, offer some financial assistance.
Yeah.
He, he already said he would if you read the letter.
Hmm, I didn't read it, but.
Okay, well, he already said he would and, uh, he's willing to, uh, be a part of that. And I brought this up to Don about a year ago. Donnie, I don't know if you remember when I came in after being at the cemetery placing flags for Memorial Day and trying to get a more sustained effort in, uh, cutting the grass and maintaining that property. I, at the time, suggested that, um, BHCA may be interested in that since, uh, since there's a large movement in, in our borough to preserve historical places. This, the cemetery is one of the most historic places in the town and I see absolutely no effort uh, going towards that. So I would like to see a movement towards that, whether it be through Carrie Benninghoff or if, if not, that we as a group move in that direction, whether it be through BHCA or some other independent organization that just takes care of the cemetery and gives it some TLC. Thank you.
I, I think, so if we move it to buildings and property, we can take that into account. There's also, uh, a woman, uh, who's lives out in California that has just donated about $40,000 to this, uh, cemetery through the Belfont Historic Preservation Foundation.
Great.
To repair the road. So there's lots of different opportunities and I think by looking at all of this together, I think that might be helpful.
Perfect.
Very good. The next, I'm sorry, ready to go?
Yep.
Yep.
Next letter is from the Pennsylvania State Mayor's Association. There, it's a letter looking for nominations for Mayor of the Year. It's, you know, there for council members to consider.
I decline. Thank you very much.
If elected, you will not serve.
It's there for your review, so we'll go on the next item. Uh, that is a, it's a letter requesting, a request from Belfont Moose Lodge. They would like to do a duck derby type of thing that was done about a year ago by another organization. If you remember Little League. See, the mayor has a duck there. Anyway, I was trying to steal the show, I guess, but anyway.
We need a motion to approve a rubber ducky race on Spring Creek between the Tally Ram Park Suspension Bridge and the Land Street Bridge on September 12th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM.
Yes.
I'll make that motion with the same conditions as we had with the previous motion.
I'll second.
Conditional, conditional on COVID.
Correct.
COVID with right of cancellation. Okay. Um, discussion? I have one item of discussion. This was mentioned up before regarding the croquet tournament. If we go to green, then the, it is expected that the maximum number of people can be, is 100 people for this event. My recollection of this event, there are hundreds of people that show up for this. So I am, I will probably vote against this just because knowing the history of how many people show up. We're going to be outside whether in the yellow or the green by September.
You are assuming that other, that people won't take responsibility and not come on, come to the event.
Yeah. Well, it's a fun event and people love coming to see the duckies going down the stream, but if it's, the problem is, is if you've got hundreds of people, where it will be a problem. Unless they could guarantee that they would limit it to 100 people. I don't know how they could do that.
Well, the other, the other condition on the previous request for the, the croquet tournament was no matter what's going on, council reserves the right. If we think there's a safety issue, you have the right to cancel the event. So I, I think that condition's in the letter. You know, whether it's green or yellow, you could.
So my, my, my question, uh, along with Joanne's is who's monitoring the, the attendance? Who's, who's responsible for overseeing that they're, they are, uh, adhering to the guidelines at that time?
I, I believe that that has fallen to the police, like if there was parties in the neighborhood, you know, more than X number of people, the police would respond and say, there's too many people, you know, I believe that's my understanding. The police would respond and say, there's too many people, you know, I believe that's my understanding.
Yeah, it's a, I'm, it's, it's not going to be a really comfortable situation, I, you're. I, I would add the same caution that the, that was in the previous letter. That we reserve the right to, to counsel or to cancel the event. And uh, but at a minimum, they have to follow the existing uh, state guidelines. In, in uh, enforced at the time.
And. And that's what Randy's motion said, so we don't have to amend it.
Right.
I think it's worth noting that the last rubber ducky race happened during cruise. So there's already a large crowd in the area, so this may not be as big of a turnout.
Did we know the other gentleman handled how many he had in his group, I guess that was at the cruise, wasn't it? That was the same.
That was a little like uh.
Yep.
Little.
Yes, we can't compare to that. But I, I think as far as us, as Bellefonte being able to cancel. Uh, that's kind of out in left field because we won't know.
Yeah.
Until that day, you know what I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in, in this case, you know, some, some things you can like there.
But it's, to me, it's, it's kind of like the Easter egg hunt, you know, if you're. You know, gonna be several hundred people and you're at a stay-at-home order or something serious. You might as well contact the organizations, say, we're not gonna let you happen.
Right.
I, so we'll, we'll emphasize that, you know, if things aren't looking good ahead of time, we'll give you as much notice as we can.
Okay.
Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Aye.
All right, next item, there's a email from a person that was working with the compost. Uh, I believe a Center County Solid Waste Authority. The, they're trying to help a hauler collecting. Us in particular, but they talked about brush also. And uh, they wanted to know if we, we, the borough would take it to Musser Lane. And Dawn had, you know, had an email exchange about we could use some grass to help break down the leaves. Uh, but I think we want to get your okay or see what questions you might have. Is there anything else to add, Dawn?
Uh, not really, I just wanted to, again, you, you hit the nail on the head, Ralph, just looking for some advice from council on. I'll, I'll address back to Mimi on this, but uh. Uh, like I said, we could probably use the grass, but I don't want to take additional, uh, I don't think we can take additional brush, we're pretty. It's getting pretty full as it is.
Don called, ta- asked me about this the other day and he suggested it might be a good idea to send this to the. Safety and sanitation committee so that they could uh, look at it uh. Regarding the ordinance and how, and how we might be able to accommodate them, but still deal with what we need to do, so. I would like to do that if at all possible, that's okay with the rest of council.
Sure.
So it's gonna go to safety?
Well, I think, I think she meant water and sanitation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So my, my question is, this is a, are we charging, we're charging our residents, are we gonna charge these other haulers?
But oh.
That's part of the discussion.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and Don, I think what might be helpful before that meeting is how, is to get an idea of how much. They're talking about.
Yep, absolutely.
I, I think, yeah, I would just say, Randy, that, that's discussions for the committee and come back with a recommendation.
Well, if we don't charge, I'm not voting for it because like I said, we're charging, we're charging our residents, so I don't see the difference.
Well, I thought we had a commercial, uh, along your lines, Randy, I thought we had a commercial, or a fee that we charged uh, for commercial dumping out there.
I, I agree with you.
Do a tree stumps and all that, you know.
Not the brush.
Envision brush and grass. It, it's why we want, you know, I think it's a good idea to have a committee, look at it. Does he and come back with a yes or no, or this is the way we want to do it.
Okay.
Real, real quick, Ralph, are there other options for, for disposing this other than our facility?
I would think so, I, I know State College has a compost facility.
Yeah.
Regional facility. Uh, I don't know, you know, we can find out how that works, but there are some other options.
And, and quickly again, do you know where this is coming from, like what township or, or?
I didn't, did you hear any of that, Dawn?
They didn't tell me a specific township, they're talking different haulers from around the area that they're trying to accommodate.
But Dawn, are they going, are they paying tipping fees then to get rid of this, this stuff they're hauling?
I'm sorry, Randy, what, what was the question again?
Are they paying tipping fees for what they're disposing at, at uh, at the land site?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm assuming, I, I'm assuming that these folks are bringing it to their facility now and paying the tipping fees and. Uh, again, they're probably looking to help them and help themselves not have to pay the tipping fee to, you know, to take uh. Bio-degradable waste somewhere, you know, somewhere else when. Uh, as Ralph said, places like Bellefonte, State College are recycling it.
Okay, let's move on.
Alrighty. Next item is a email about from the historic, I'm seeing a state historical museum commission. Sorry, I got that right, museum commission in Pennsylvania Downtown Center. For a webinar called Ready for Preservation. It's also about revitalizing or restarting. The downtown that during this event or after this event. The webinar is Thursday, May twenty eighth, ten to eleven A M. Uh, again, you have the email copy, so if you're interested, you know, schedule that in. Looks like it's something that might be interesting.
Gina's not on the ca- call this evening, she asked me to tell, tell you that she will be attending this meeting. I was going to, however, I have another meeting that I, I schedule out that same time each month, so I won't be able to.
Okay. The next email is from the Center County Planning Office in regard to. It's basically a solar clean energy seminar. It was scheduled for March, it's being rescheduled for six P M, May twenty sixth. And, you know, if you're interested, we'll figure out how to get you registered. You know, Joanne had a question on that, but it, it is six P M, May twenty sixth. And specifically for Center County for this particular webinar.
So if we're interested, should we tell you and then you'll get that to Ray?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, I know we're at the end of the list, but like I said, I just, I just noticed I had an email, let me see if I can find it here. That was a question, let's see if we can squeeze it in here. It's from the Pennsylvania, Central Pennsylvania Tasting Trail. Lucy Rogers, President of the Central PA Tasting Trail Association. The trail is requesting permission to hold a pickup location. For tasting trail member products within the Bellefonte Borough. On one to two days per week for the summer. Where until the state mandated yellow phase ends or whichever comes first. Uh, says potential locations under consideration are. The Lamb Street Bridge or Gamble Mill Parking Lot. Uh, and then, of course, they'd have to get permission from the owners. The pickup location would only require one or two twelve by twelve tents. And it would be, you know, staffed by ramp certified employees. Uh, they check IDs, Patreon, patrons picking up products. Pickup would require customers to buy product online before pickup. Of course, they would have permits and insurance. And of course, as I said, they'd have to check with any property owners, but. I guess they're wanting to know if we would have any problems, like if, sure that they used. The area by Lamb Street Bridge, I'm thinking they're talking of what's left of Dunlop Street. Uh, is my guess is what they're talking about. That just, you know, is an email.
That, that property belongs to uh. Tom Song, so we did, he, they, so if it's there, we could have to get permission from Songers, if it's the. Uh, Gamble Mill Parking Lot, that would be from Cedar Cog?
Yes.
Okay.
And whether Cedar Cog's lease is in place with the new owners of Gamble Mill and they have to chime in. You know, that, that might be the case, but. I mean, I, I guess, I guess the question, is there any objection from the borough? They, they mentioned two pretty much quasi-private properties. Uh, if, if they'd have, if they would come up with something that was in borough property. I guess we'll have to find that out, but any, any objections to the two properties mentioned?
I haven't objectioned, but I got a question, would they need some kind of a permit from the state?
Probably, yeah, they're, I would think so, Mike, that they, they, they probably know what they need. This tasting trail, you know, goes around different locations.
Right.
And the members would have a tent here with maybe fifteen different vendor products. Buy online and you pick it up there. Twice a week, maybe it's here in Bellefonte, the next two days, it's in Penns Valley and so on, you know.
But this is bottle, this would be bottled product.
I think, yes, that's what it said. Yeah, you buy it online, come and get it.
We, we don't know what two days.
No, I didn't see that anywhere, it just says one or two days per week, you know, for the summer.
Just one or two days over the entire summer or one or two days every single week for the entire summer?
One or two days per week over the summer or until yellow goes away. Whichever comes first.
Me, I, if, if, if they, if they satisfy state law.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I, I'm inclined to say it's, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Would, would there be any issues with the farmer's market down there?
That, that's, I have to work that out, you know, with the property owners and. The state law, I guess, well, you know.
Could we have some motion that say that, yes, we will do it as long as they. Uh, don't conflict with the farmer's market, because I don't want them on the same day as the farmer's market. Because of the crowding issue.
That makes sense, yeah, I think you could do any of that, yeah.
So who would like to make a motion something like that?
Well, well, Joanne, they possibly could have it if it's after the farmer's market.
Right, I'm just, I'm saying as long as it doesn't con- conflict with the farmer's.
Okay, yeah.
I don't care what day it is. I need a motion to do, to say that's okay, so we can give them their official permission.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Prendagast, who's seconding it?
I'll second it.
And Clayton, so the motion is to allow them one to two days a week outside the uh, farmer's market timing. Uh, with the permission of whatever property owners are necessary to create that ability and the state. Uh. State um, group comment is needed.
L C B or whatever.
Yeah. So that was Prendagast and Clayton. Discussion?
I'll need to recuse myself from the vote.
Okay, you know what you need to do.
Need a form to sign, Ralph.
I, I can send it to you.
So we have six people that can vote. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, so move. I have one more and actually I'm gonna turn it over to Randy, he sent out uh, code enforcement statistics this afternoon.
Yeah, it's the same thing, it comes in, in our package usually and it was missing, we had a meeting on Tuesday. This, this past week, so I just wanted to get that out, it wasn't missed by anybody. Because they didn't do any paper packets uh, for this, everything was done through the email. So I, you know, it's just your rental housing. Uh, fire inspections and, or sorry, rental housing inspections and commercial fire inspections. And that's all for February.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other written correspondence?
I think I, done.
Okay, and that, so we'll move over to public comment and Scott, Ralph from EMS, you're on.
I really didn't have anything tonight under comment unless you folks had a question for me. Uh, I had forwarded to Ralph and Dawn, I believe the end of last week. Uh, some status updates uh, for the first quarter of two thousand and twenty. And a final year end for all of two thousand nineteen. Along with uh, kind of a pandemic or uh, disaster type of update. Where were our agency is up to this point and looking into the near future. Uh, if you have any questions on any of that, I can try and answer it. Unfortunately, I'm at home right now and didn't think to bring uh, those documents home with me to reference them, but.
Okay, no problem.
I, uh, if you have any questions, that's fine, uh, I was here because I understand Mayor Wilson might have something for me here in a little while.
I'm right behind you, Scott.
Okay.
Ju- just real quick, Scott, how's the Center Crest project going and? I mean, I, obviously you have Bellefonte Borough in your statistics. As the biggest user of your services. And I'm just checking, is that still related to Center Crest? And what do you think will happen when they move out or what's your predictions?
Yeah, but uh, Bellefonte Borough has always been the municipality with uh, the majority of the call load and call volume. And just from memory, I'm thinking you folks probably have it there in front of you, you're probably somewhere around forty to forty-two percent of total usage.
Yeah.
Uh, as we discussed before, you know, when that facility moves out of the uh, out of the area. Uh, you know, we anticipate probably about a hundred and fifty calls per year uh, decrease. So you'll still be the number one user of services, just because that's where the population base is. Uh, along with a couple, you know, a couple other facilities uh, or high density such as Brockerhoff and. And Cadillac Building and, and the Garmin. Uh, you know, which usually typically have older folks in them, which are higher, higher users many times, but not always. Uh, I've not heard anything additional, I don't know where their construction stands with. You know, the last two months or so with, with business shutdown and construction shutdown. The last I had heard, they were projecting by the end of two thousand twenty to have their new facility finished and. Ready to move in, I don't know how this uh, you know, COVID issue has pushed back their timeline, if at all, I don't know.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks. So, seeing, any questions for Scott? Seeing none? Tom, you're on as mayor.
Wait, I have one.
Okay.
Wait, okay, go ahead.
I have an oral comment that I am, I was asked to call. Uh, and have him put on the speakerphone, it's Kevin Lloyd of Big Spring Spirits. Uh, he, he, he called me or got ahold of me late last week. Counsel and basically, to make a long story short, I am to give him a call. He wants, he has an idea about a special event. He, he wanted to talk to you guys about it, so if you don't mind, I'll try calling him real quick.
Okay.
One second here. Let me try that again.
Technology is a wonderful thing, Ralph.
Yeah. Uh.
Kevin Ke.
Hi, Kevin Harrow.
Hey, how are you?
Have you on speakerphone and we're here in the council meeting, uh, I, you're, you're. Uh, I, you're, you're on if you want to talk to counsel about your idea.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so my, my idea isn't entirely all that original in that, um, uh, a lot of, as I started researching a little bit, I've noticed that around the country, people are starting to do what we call pop-up drive-in. And, um, so the, my idea would be is to, uh, possibly, and this is a discussion, it's just, uh, just a thought. Maybe use, for example, the Armory property or even the waterfront property, something, you know, a property that the borough, uh, controls or is involved with. And, um, uh, the guy, and I don't know his last name, but I think Ralph probably does. Justin, who, uh, had the, um, cherry pickers with the screen that was a salute to the first responders at the waterfront property a week or two ago.
Yeah.
Uh, but anyway, I, I've been speaking with him and, uh, he has a forty-foot screen and he can also get a transponder that would broadcast, uh, the audio. And he also has connections with the film people so that he thought it would be pretty cheap to get, uh, to get a movie because it would be, uh, for, for commercial use. So my idea would be is to maybe do, uh, a pop-up drive-in. Um, have, uh, food trucks there so to help the local, uh, food providers. Uh, maybe charge, uh, a fee, not a big fee, but for people to get in. And then, um, maybe say ten percent of sales from the food vendors could also, uh, be donated to this cause. And then, and then really just use it for a local charity, which, um, I didn't really have any thoughts on that, uh, necessarily, but it, 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 so, um, the food vendors would win from the food. The charity would win, um, from the admission and then from a portion of the food sales. And, um, I thought it would be kind of a fun thing because people could get their food, they would stay in their car, they would be self-contained, um, be able to maintain their distances and, uh, and just give them an opportunity to go out and, and see a movie and, and do something. So, uh, I don't have a super lot of details, but, um, I think logistically it'd be very possible to pull off because we have all those pieces. Uh, I just wanted to see what maybe the Borough Council thought about that and maybe if you had any ideas to improve that.
I'd be in favor of, but where would you do it? Someplace where cars can park.
Well. I, I, I was kind of thinking maybe at the Armory building such that the screen be kind of at the top of the hill where the one building is and then the cars would be parked down below going down towards, Bishop Street, um, and then so they would pu- kind of pu- park up the hill so that, uh, you know, the screen would be kind of above it. I think the slope would be nice to not, to help not block, you know, the people in front of you, uh, would, would have to not block their view.
Would this be something we should cha- send the building and property for them to review?
We, we could on our end. What time, what, what timeframe were you looking at, Kevin?
Well, I think any time would be okay. I didn't really. I, you know, I, I think if I would have thought of it sooner, I thought Memorial Day weekend would have been ideal because people don't have as much to do as normally, but I think that's going to be too quick. I would like to be able to, um, advertise it. The other thing I was thinking, uh, having researched this a little bit is that a lot of people suggested that, uh, to sell tickets or sort of a reservation system so that there isn't a big long line of people trying to get in and people traveling from distances and not being able to get in. So I was thinking that we would, you know, sell the tickets online. Uh, could be through my website, uh, you know, and then, you know, definitely cap it at a certain number. Uh, but to answer your question, timeframe, um, I, I think, um, I don't know, I'd like to have two or three or four weeks to really advertise it and get it out there and sell tickets and stuff, so. Um, maybe sometime in June, uh, middle.
Since July fourth weekend, everything has been canceled, so that might be a reasonable thought. Everything in the county has been canceled.
Yeah.
Yeah, but she starts and.
Stay for more.
Uh, July fourth, I think Joanne said, and then of course Father's Day weekend's about a month away.
And we could do more than one, I mean, but it, depending on how the first one goes, so, uh, so any of those dates would be great.
Yeah, I'd shoot for something in June.
So if we try and move this over to building and property to have a discussion with him, then we can bring it back at the first meeting in June. And, and then go from there.
Yeah, what we'll do as well, building and property, meet with Kevin and we'll probably do that virtually, but we'll do that between now and the next meeting and try to come back with a recommendation at the next meeting.
Were the meetings in the park or the, were the park canceled?
Uh, yes. Yes.
I guess I could throw that calendar away.
Alrighty, Kevin, I think we have a game plan on our end. We're gonna let our one council committee take a look at this, meet with you. We'll, we'll be in touch as soon as the time. And, uh, try, try to hash out the details and come back to counsel at the next meeting.
For the public's view and.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank, for the public's view and Walker has now joined us.
Alrighty, Kevin, we're gonna let you go.
Okay, thank you all. Thanks for your consideration.
Bye.
Bye.
Now, Tom, it's your turn.
Well, perfect segue. Uh, thank you, uh, for, um, giving me the opportunity to present this proclamation for, um, EMS week. Just to designate the week of May seventeenth to the twenty-third as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas a med, uh, emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services Team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill the gap of providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services System consists of responders, technicians, paramedics, pre-hospital registered nurses, pre-hospital physicians, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services Team, wh- whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services Providers within the borough of Bellefonte has, have their brothers and sisters throughout the nation demonstrated exemplary dedication, uh, to the mission and concern of overall public health and safety and preparing for the responding to potential pan- pandemic-related incidences related to COVID-nineteen virus. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Service Providers by designated, by designating Emergency Medical Service Week now. Therefore, I, Thomas Wilson, Mayor of Borough of Bellefonte, Center County, Pennsylvania, in recognition of this event, to hereby proclaim the week of May seventeenth to the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS Strong, Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow. I encourage the community to, to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities. Thank you. I have no further report. Proceed with the proceedings.
Thank you, Scott, for everything you do.
Yes, thanks, Scott. Thanks for being here tonight with us as well.
Well, you're quite welcome. And Mayor Wilson, on behalf of everyone at Bellefonte EMS, we do thank you for this year's proclamation. Every day and during our current pandemic, all of our staff continue to provide service to the community without hesitation, despite potential risk of their own personal health and safety. We thank you, Mayor Wilson, and members of council for your support, not just during this annual EMS week, but every week of the year. So thank you very much.
And thank you for your service and for all your, all your staff's for service, Scott.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work and safe travels.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor? Seeing none? My turn. Um. Both Ralph and I, I have received a couple of phone calls from a resident regarding backyard burning of leaves and brush. Basically, it's the, the fire pit issue that we discussed last fall. The major concerns this time had to do with associated air pollutions, severe smoke and her inability to breathe because of the smoke that was produced. Uh. There has been a little bit of work with the police were called and asked to follow up. I don't know what happened after that, but I think this is just another reason why we need to look at revising our air pollution ordinance to, to look at the fire pit issue because this is not a one-time complaint. It's coming from multiple sections in town at this point. Do you have anything else to add, Ralph?
No, you covered it, but that's exactly the truth. So we've had, you know, various calls over the last couple of years. People burning something. Okay, yes, and people are burning something other than wood or what have you. It has some kind of chemical or something in it, plastic maybe, I'm not sure, but it's not good.
Okay, that's, that's my own report. Council members, do you have any reports?
I have none.
I have, I have one thing, Joanne.
Okay, go ahead.
I attended a virtual meeting of the Center Region Council Government's Public Safety Meeting. Uh, it was approved, uh, to complete the agreements to transfer the hazmat program from the Pennsylvania State University to COG, i.e. Alpha Fire Department. Uh, and, uh, it was approved by consensus of the committee. Bellefonte abstained from that because it's not one of the things that we normally vote for as a group. Uh, but I wanted to put it out there because it, it can, uh, relate to our fire department's, uh, assistance. Um, the Alphas now instead of Penn State, uh, as far as hazmat assistance. I'm not sure when that all going to take place, uh, and I'll let you know when I find out, but I think it's could be a couple of weeks away before everything's all signed and, and done. And this, there are some staff reports from, uh, Center Region COVID Wall Snyder, Fire Protection Steve Bear and Emergency Management Sean Kaufman. And then on a matter of record, just to make everybody aware, Jeff, Jim Staff retired April third. Uh, he was a COG Executive Director. Uh, Eric Nor- Norenberg was hired on March sixteenth and he took over, uh, COG Executive Director on April fourth. And then they had a couple of retirements and one person, uh, left, left the position to take a new position out of state. All related to code. That was it.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions? Seeing none. Doug, there's the authority minister. Do you want to say something about that?
Uh, it's pretty straightforward, uh, there, I, I really don't have any report. Ralph, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, basically, I'll just reiterate. The authority, you know, early on, didn't, you know, decided quickly not to terminate any services with anyone that was having difficulty making payments. Uh, we have tried to work with anybody that's had an issue and we will continue to do that. We suspended some new meter installations that were scheduled. And, uh, you know, obviously the reason, or the reason is obvious, but we'll, we'll reschedule accordingly when we think it's safe and safe for the, the homeowners as well as our employees, but generally, we're, we're, we're figuring like the rest of the departments, kind of a very bare bones year. Uh, trying to look at where we can save, uh, resources if, you know, we don't have as much as we thought we would through our budgets and rates and all of that. So, uh, we're, we're being very cautious and we'll continue to do that for now.
Any questions? Seeing none? We'll move on to old business.
Sure. There's a couple of items, uh, one's labeled the revolving loan fund plan. Uh, there's a draft in the packet prepared by Solicitor Rodney Beard with the Industrial Development Authority and Dawn's been working hand in hand with that agreement. I believe it's, it's as much of a near draft or for, ready to go, near final copy as can be, but Dawn, did you want to add anything?
Uh, I just wanted to add that when Rod did this, he drafted this as if the, uh, beta would oversee the revolving loan. I'm not even sure that's how council wants to handle that. Uh, you can, as you read the revolving loan fund plan, you might want to consider that. But you, council may also want to consider having a special committee that oversees this five hundred thousand dollars, uh, uh, grant that we're getting and, and, and handing out to, uh, the gamble mill as it's going to take a couple of years before the funds start rolling back in, but this is going to give us guidelines or give council or somebody guidelines on how the funding will be redistributed, so. Uh, I don't know, Joanne, if you want to turn this over to have, uh, a little more insight and thought put into, uh, how we're going to do this, because this was just Rod taking a stab at this.
Would this be building a property again? I would think.
Uh, maybe either that, I, I think maybe finance would be a good committee.
Okay. Let's move this one to finance. Okay, next.
Next item is just a note about a water main break that took place on North Spring Street. Uh, the pipeline was repaired that evening whenever this happened.
This was, this was last week and they initially thought it was the property owner. So the property owner came out, pulled, completely ripped up his yard, found out that there was a leak there, but in the process found out there was a second leak on the borough's side. So that's when the borough is called. So if the road is messed up right now, the sidewalk is messed up. And that, we understand will be delayed until we have the staff to actually repair all of that. So there's calm sitting in the middle of the street at this point, just for the public.
That's correct. Uh, you, you probably have noticed that we do leave time for it to settle. Believe it or not, a little bit of rain and everything actually helps all that new stone and everything settle, get good compaction. So yes, we will be restoring the road and whatever we did on our end, but, uh, it's, we have an old system and sometimes leaks happen. So, uh, we're just giving you an update on what was happening in that part of town. Uh, the next item, we did, you know, incur an accident with one of our refuse trucks on May seventh. Uh, it's just an unfortunate thing. It sounds, we are looking into it. It, it appears to be some human error, but we are looking into it, reviewing that and we'll deal with it appropriately. Uh, next item is, which I believe is already covered, Emergency Medical Services Update and Funding, as you, as Scott said, that information's in your packet for you to review. The next item is an old business item. At the wastewater treatment plant, you know, we had an opening with, for an operator. Uh, that position has been filled as of last Monday, the individual started and is, you know, onboard and going through the training process. Uh, so that, that's a goo- that's good news. Uh, Governor's Park Ball Field Memorandum. Uh, Dawn accurately tried to describe our relationship with the, with the school as well as what we traditionally have done maintenance-wise with the ball field. It really more or less, uh, comes down to grass mowing of the infield and the outfield once a week. Uh, we don't do anything more than that, uh, to any, for any of the teams that play on the field. If you have questions, Dawn? If you have questions Dawn, Dawn's probably the best to answer if I could try.
Any questions? Okay.
Not hearing any. The next item is a report for police overtime from year to date for, you know, this year. So, you know, we can maybe have finance look at that and, or HR and may have some questions as to what was reimbursable hours, what was not and so on. But it's there.
So FYI, I took that report this afternoon and I put it into an Excel spreadsheet and then created a chart and a regression line to see how we were doing on overtime. And the, the overtime is trending down, which is good. There was one blip that went up and Sean reported back to me this afternoon that that blip was a result of east, overtime for Easter weekend or the holiday issue.
Well, the, as Ralph mentioned, what we want to do with that, we, we want to, we would, we want to track that this year so that next year we'll actually be able to budget overtime in, in our budget. This is a fairly common feature in many municipalities. And as Ralph also mentioned, we also want to get the, some overtime is reimbursable being that we're doing service for the state police or some other function. So we'll want to, we'll want to track that information this year so that we'll then be able to plan for it in the future. So, so future planning, tabulating numbers.
Very good.
Go on Doug.
Looking at the police overtime report, is there any way that we could have a little more explanation of, of why there is overtime? For instance, in January, 105 hours of overtime. And then during the pandemic, we have, and then maybe this is the Easter week, March 20th, 40 hours of overtime.
That's correct Doug.
And then May 1st, 47, while there are no courts in session, the town is pretty empty. But there's no explanation, I, I, it's a great report, but there's no explanation of why the overtime was needed. We're, we're sort of left to.
Tom, could you get that information?
I, I can and we talk about that on a fairly regular basis. The overtime situation is, I know it comes when it's on paper, shows up and I, I think you guys are entitled to an explanation, obviously. But every time Sean and I talk about it, there seems to be logical explanations. There's, there's people out, there's people sick, there's people injured, there's vacation time, there's situations and holidays. So, yeah, it happens. But as Joanne said, it's so far for the year, it's stretched out and it seems to be doing better than we had been doing in the past. But I will talk to Sean and he can spend some time providing those explanations for you.
Well, if, if they're reimbursable hours, then we can come up with a, a, a charge number for them and we'll be able to track that within our system. And so we'll then be able in the future to more intelligently plan for our budget.
Okay.
And I, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but I thought, I thought. What? I don't know what that was.
That was a cat.
That was my cat, sorry.
Okay, um, I. Somebody was attacking it. I thought we had to call the police.
Running overtime.
Yeah, right, that's right. That's right. So in our discussion, and maybe this is a committee thing, but weren't we going to approve these overtimes or is that something that? John, help me out here. Am I thinking the wrong way or?
I, I think there, there might've been some discussion of, of some, of some overtimes issues, but this is part of tracking the problem and understanding where we're at. So we're, 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 we're pulling together the information so that we can be smarter in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so yeah, we have work to do.
So that, that information that came out, I was kind of clueless as to what it was even supposed to mean. Was somebody complaining about it? Was, I mean, there's no names on it, there's no direction to it. It was, it was, it told me what overtime was spent and where. But again, there was no, no definitions to the creation of the overtime. And I, I think as we've said earlier, that's important so we understand what's going on and having somebody's name on it as to who owns it, if there's questions to go back to would be helpful as well.
All good points Randy and we'll, we'll, we'll work on that in the Finance Committee.
And it looks like Tom heard it because he's writing something down.
I am, I am, I'm writing names, we need names, addresses and phone numbers.
But see, that, that's all within our payroll system. So, that's the beauty, that's the beauty of payroll.
Get the duck up there.
It's all coming together. I think this is a thing of beauty. We just got to use our payroll system.
There you go.
Thank you. Any other old business? Seeing none, moving on to new business. Randy, why don't you take this one since you're on the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I can do that or Ralph can, I think he was ready to bring it up and highlight.
I was just going to introduce it. It's the Nittany Valley Joint Planning Commission memo or memorandum in their, for public comment or Borough Council Comment on Better Townships Act 537 Special Study. They're taking comments through May 28th. If you looked at the PowerPoints, it really involves, I'll say controversial sewer line from Shiloh Road down through Spring Creek, go up over the hill to the back of the airport and then connecting into the sewer line that feeds or takes collection from the airport. Controversial because there's a sewer plant right across the street. But Better Township must feel this is the way to do it. You know, I'm just going to leave it up to you guys, but it has been controversial, it's been talked about probably for three or four years or more. You know, the Borough Authority weighed in on it a couple of years ago and then was asked recently, they declined recently, they felt they already weighed in on it. So it's there for your, your consideration as to what you want to do.
I, I started looking over it and I'm not an expert in this stuff. And, you know, I, I tried to jot down some things, you know, at one point I read something where as far as their timeline, you know, with the COVID and everything is happening, has a timeline changed? And I don't have that in front of me right now. But it indicated, you know, when things would be starting in 2020, what month and things like that. And I'm wondering if I get backed up, but it seems like they're pushing this study through to get at least approval for the study is the way I understand this.
Well, there's a, there's a multi-part process through DEP. One of them is a special study. They, before they do anything, they got to do a special study, jump through a bunch of hoops and then submit everything in DEP and then do the construction. So, you know, that there's, this is just one phase of the process.
Yeah, and they had said, and there was a note in there saying that there, there was an agreement between Belfont Borough Authority. It was under Appendix B. I went to the Appendix B, it wasn't there, so I'm not sure. Well, if you've seen anything come through from them.
The agreement, I think what they're talking about is a famous 1976 agreement where we treat their wastewater at our plant. I'm thinking that's the agreement that every, that we've always talked about, fought over and so on.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure because like I said, I couldn't find it where they had, had said it was. But I'd like to get together maybe with somebody and, and formulate some, some questions. I said, I pulled a few things out of it, but I know not everybody's interested in this and I'm not going to try to drag everybody through it. If we could set up a meeting maybe with, I mean, what it would be honestly.
Well, I think, I think and Ralph, you, you know more history than I do because of my short time on the Authority. But I think we as the Authority have already addressed the issues that, that they have asked us to address. We're sort of out of it Randy, we have no part in, we have no part in this. We expressed what we thought our position should be and that was several years ago. Is that correct Ralph?
Yes.
So we really don't want to be involved in this at all. We, we made our, we made our recommendation or our support, however you want to state it. And, and, and we're, we're not part of that anymore. So Ralph, Ralph, back me up on this or add comments.
Sure.
We already have an opinion or a, a opinion of what we think, I guess.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, sure.
Doug, that report from a couple of years ago, is that possible to resurrect, look at? And then do what Randy is saying to say this is?
We could do that, but we really don't have anything to do with this. We're.
Well, let me, let me clarify. The idea was that you're looking at in this PowerPoint was nearly identical, same idea a couple of years ago. All, all the Borough Authority, Authority did was write a letter saying it seems to make sense, I'm paraphrasing it, but says it seems to make sense to go across the street to that sewer plant, then going down through the valley underneath Spring Creek, all the environmental issues and all, you know. And, and basically the letter at that time, you know, some of the Better Township Supervisors were against the project as being proposed now. I, I don't know if that's still the case or not, but the Borough, as Doug very accurately said, the Borough Authority only recently was asked to revisit this. They declined, they felt they already weighed in two years ago and nothing happened, so.
So then it's the direction that since this request just came out, I think last week from, from the county, from Elizabeth Loes, asking the, you know, Nittany Valley to generate some questions. That's, that's why I pushed it back to the Borough to see if there's anything that people on the Borough might be interested in looking at or questioning. If, if there's no response, is that what you're saying?
Well, nothing from the Authority. They, they said they, they didn't want to get into a big argument. You know, we've, we've been arguing with Spring Better Walker over many years. They said it's not worth it to them to argue or fight, start another expensive fight or something like that. But if Borough Council wants to say something, you're welcome to.
Randy, if you, if you want to sit down with me, I, I've got the concerns that the Authority raised two years ago. I still have the same concerns now. So I think maybe it's just sitting down and putting some questions together, saying these are, I would be willing to do that.
Okay. Let's figure out.
We just had to be, we just had to be careful liability and what we're asking and we, that's sort of why we kept ourselves away from it. We already made our statement as the Borough Authority. And if council wants to do their thing, that's fine, but.
Well, we're not really doing this council, but we're doing it as, this is public comments. That's all it is and we're.
Well, when you're, when you're going is representing the Borough Council, you and Joanne proposing these questions, that is, that is for, if you're doing it individually, that's a different story.
But we're still doing it through Nittany Valley Joint Planning Commission as well.
And not the Borough.
No, it doesn't have to be. We can just run it through Nittany Valley.
It's fine to do it with council. That's what council wishes to do. I'm just telling you why we as the Authority gave our opinion and decided to, that our original comments were, they remain the same.
Okay. That's fine. I said, I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble. It's just, it's just questions. We're not giving any directions for just questions.
And we don't know what that opinion was because you're being kind of closed mouth about it.
From the Authority?
Yeah.
The opinion was go.
Yeah. Correct, go ahead Ralph.
Borough said it makes sense to go across the street to that sewer plant instead of going down through the Spring Creek Valley and back up over the hill behind the airport. Can't imagine what that's going to cost, but it just seems to make sense to go across the street.
And, and the environmental impact.
And the environmental air impact. You know, just from a reasonable person perspective.
I agree.
What the Authority said.
It sounds like we're in line with, with what you're saying. That's, that's what a lot of my questions meant to as well.
So Randy and I will set up a meeting and try to come up with a list of questions.
Well, it's one of those things that you, you could actually almost do that through the Spring Creek.
Watershed Commission. It's on the agenda for day after tomorrow for them as well, so.
Bring it on.
That way you don't drag the Authority into it.
Yeah.
Okay, because it sounds like Randy's looking more at the environmental questions of, you know, logical ones of like, why are you, why are you trying to take the line under Spring Creek?
I got that one in there too.
Yeah.
That's not going to be the only time that's passed.
Okay, moving on.
I'm sorry, do you want to take it Joanne?
Yeah, I will take it. The next one, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we had an executive session on human resources and personnel issues. And what I wanted to do is let the public know in general what was going on. The Borough is looking at anticipated losses in revenues such as our earned income tax because of all of the layoffs that we've had throughout the county. And so we will be losing income via our income tax that we would regularly get for some people. And we're therefore considering some short-term adjustments to our own payroll. This would include not bringing back some seasonal workers, staggering work schedules and offering some early retirement options for staff. So, there's no questions. I'll move on to the last item on the agenda. And I'd like to go off on a high note. This is a proclamation of the Borough of Belfont, Center County, Pennsylvania, congratulating the Belfont Area School District and Higher Education Classes of 2020 on their exemplary academic career. Whereas the Belfont Area School District Class of 2020 has demonstrated exemplary academic resilience and strength in the face of adversity and challenging times. And whereas many of the young adults in our community who are graduating from colleges, universities and technical schools throughout the country this year have also demonstrated a similar exemplary academic resilience and strength in the face of these adversity and challenging times. And whereas the graduating class and students have exhibited a commitment to community health and safety by holding this year's commencement ceremonies in a virtual environment. And whereas while the commencement ceremonies cannot take place as originally planned, the circumstances should not, in no way diminish the sense of pride and accomplishment felt by the graduating class and students on their day of celebration. And whereas emerging leaders in our global community, it is the solemn responsibility of each student in the class of 2020 to employ the lessons learned throughout their academic experiences to usher in a new era of social and civic responsibility. And whereas it is acknowledged that the tradition of scholastic excellence instilled in each student has prepared them to meet this responsibility head-on and succeed as future leaders, pioneers, creators, motivators and role models. Now, therefore, the Belfont Borough Council and the mayor do hereby congratulate the Belfont Area School District Class of 2020 and the Higher Education Classes of 2020 graduates from Belfont on their. of twenty twenty graduates from Balfont on their exemplary academic careers. And further, the Balfont Borough Council and Mayor hereby extends its sincere wishes for a bright and limitless future to the graduating seniors as they embark on the next journey in their lives. Proclaimed this eighteenth day of May twenty twenty and will be signed by both Tom Wilson as Mayor and myself as President of the Borough Council.
Very nice, thank you, Joanne.
Very nice.
Uh, if any other uh, biz, business?
I have one item, Joanne, just wanted to remind the uh, public that May, um, May twenty-fifth, next Monday's Memorial Day, there'll be no refuse pickup that day. It'll be picked up, if your refuse day is Monday, it'll be picked up Wednesday, May twenty-seventh. And as a reminder, there will be no brush or grass pickup next week either. We will send out a mass phone call to everybody uh, to remind them, but this is just a, a, another, uh, another reminder.
Any other uh, business for the good of the cause? Saying none, need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. That was the second, who was the first? I think that was Mike.
Aw, you like Mike better.
Let John have it, I.
Okay, John, you got it. John made the motion, Clayton seconded. Saying no opposition, we're adjourned at eight fifty-three PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Joanne. Good night.
Night.
Night.